Yeah, got it. Yeah. I just wanna get, let's see. Participants, I just wanna do a screenshot so we have it. I know, Michelle, how are we always late when we're sitting right there, right? Everybody ready? I as well. Good evening, today is June twenty seventh and this is the Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday. So, uh, let's join, join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Orange County. One nation, founded on liberty and justice. There's an alarm already. All right. I'll make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion for the approval of the minutes of June thirteenth. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pat, can we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, the board briefly met an executive session before this evening's meeting to discuss pending litigation in real estate items. No decisions were made, it was predetermined.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Does anyone have any public comment on non-agenda items?
I.
Yes, Debbie.
On behalf of Bushkill Emergency Corp, we'd like to thank the supervisors and the citizens of the township. Because of the tax, we were able to start to purchase a new truck, which will replace something that is almost fifteen years old. Thank you.
True. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's the first time we've been thanked for a new tax.
About twelve years.
Yeah. Um, is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Anyone? Okay, just um, a couple of announcements. Um, congratulations to our engineer Ben Coats, who's not here, on the new addition to his family. Um, congratulations to Keely Collins, our employment attorney, who also welcomed a new addition to her family. Um, yesterday was the sixtieth anniversary of the Marshalls Creek explosion. So, thank you Channel thirteen for giving it the coverage that um, you did. Thank you Ed for providing an interview to Channel thirteen about it and for representing the survivors of that event. For those of you who haven't seen uh, it, you can go to the Community and Cultural Center and see the exhibit there. The interactive kiosk is up, so you can flip through that too, as well as look at what's on the, on the walls. Um, and thank you to Holly Dennis for setting all of that up and for managing it. Um, on Monday, we had our final meeting with JLN Associates. So, that closes the chapter on the report that four municipalities joined together uh, in commissioning so that we could uh, move forward with uh, fire and EMS. And that would be Price Township, Smithfield Township, Middle Smithfield Township, and Delaware Watergate that joined together and commissioned this report. So, um, now we have this um, assessment in hand and a new fire taxes Debbie just mentioned. And a comprehensive study, there's still work to be uh, done as, because there still is a shortage of volunteers and we'll move forward on that. Um, that said, uh, I forgot to put these on the side table, but here are some flyers for the Marshalls Creek uh, summer raffle. They still need to raise money for unrestricted funds while the tax will cover um, operational expenses. Um, tomorrow, there is a ribbon cutting and grand opening for Pocono Packing Ship. That's in the Ice Chopper uh, complex. So, we're pretty excited about that. I think Michelle received good customer service there. Is that correct?
It is, they are wonderful.
And um, Holly has begun on memory makers. So, uh, if you are a senior citizen and a longtime resident and you uh, meaning thirty years or longer, um, give Holly a call so that you can join this year's memory makers uh, celebration. Uh, and then uh, two more things. Uh, mid-year report is on July eleventh and that's uh, one of the reports that we give to the public. Every year, we do a preview in the beginning of the year so everyone can see our plans and the goals that we set and the mid-year report kinda tells you where we are by now. The staff works very hard to put that together, that would be on July eleventh. And that'll also include the plaque presentation to the persons of the year and runners-up. And lastly, um, Community Day, Parks and Recreation, uh, put that together for July thirteenth um, over in Echo Lake. And that's all I have, unless, Mark, Mike, do you have any announcements? Okay, and that brings us to correspondence.
Even though the agenda doesn't have anything on there, I got something in this afternoon. Um, I don't know how many people, have you ever heard of Wawa's Hoagie Day? It's, have you? First time I've heard it. It's um, a heartfelt thank you. Uh, Wawa's uh, northeast Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, Florida. Their employees nominated our Public Works Department to receive free hoagies today. And they, they won, they wanted to thank Public Works Road Department for the wonderful work that they do, especially when they plow roads and employees at Wawa can get back and forth to work. So, I just wanted to bring that out.
Well said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to see. Well, we have less people on Zoom this time than we did last time. Uh. But now comes the exciting part, it's the bid review and possible award for the sale of the golf course and remaining lands. Um, so at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we opened the bids and accepted them for legal review. Um, and now we'll make a motion and then there'll be a second. And then uh, there can be discussion, questions, and comments, both from people in the audience and those that are on Zoom that have any uh, questions. So, after the second, those of you who are on Zoom, cause you're all muted now, um, you can unmute yourself and ask a question. Um, let me just take a screenshot of this. So, we know who is here. Control C. Uh, for it, and then just um, unmute yourself and go ahead and ask your question for it. Um, as per, so then what happens after that? Uh, Pat, you can correct me if I miss a step. But as per the bid documents and the terms of sale, um, the bidders may not withdraw their bid for a hundred and twenty days. So, their checks are being held in escrow until we close. The high bidder will have sixty days to close. If the high bidder and the township do not have a closing, and the high bidder moves on, they leave their deposit behind and the township may then look to the next highest bidder and so on. So, um, quickly, the uh, listed bids received and read aloud um, were Ry Select at one million dollars, Amit Patel at seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents, La Shiesa for six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and Zebra Meadow with uh, Opus Partners for seven hundred and fifty-one thousand and five hundred dollars. So, as we said at the last meeting, um, this has been a monumental effort, twelve years in the making. Um, extending the bid period for another ninety days was a good choice. Um, hiring R K R Hess to do a survey to put uh, in the deal room was a good decision. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is if it takes a village uh, to do something, it takes a whole township working together to accomplish this. So, I won't read again the, the list that of many folks that we thanked last time from twelve years on now, but um, it doesn't lessen the gratitude that we feel. So, I will make a motion to accept the bid from Ryan Schmidt at one million dollars uh, for a minimum bid with his ten percent buyer's premium also, um, conditioned upon all documents that are required and necessary uh, in the bid documents.
I'll second.
So, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Their fireworks?
Excuse me?
Are they fireworks?
We'll wait until we close, when we close, yeah. That's, it sounds like a lot of people were thinking of that. So, anyone on Zoom, any comments or questions? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to Ryan Schmidt.
Thank you. We're excited to uh, get started on the project.
I'd like to ask, ask a question please, uh, this is Tom Wolf.
Oh, sure.
Well, Tom Wolf has a question, yes.
Is Ryan able to offer any kind of broad overview of what their plans are? I know everything has to be submitted to the township for approval first, but just as a general overview.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Tom, I, we can appreciate the question. Um, I think it's, it's probably a little early to, to dive into exactly what our plans are. Just speaking in generalities, uh, we, we plan to continue operating it as a golf course and we're very excited about that. Um, we were down there uh, a few days ago, we, we spent a couple of days in town there and um, and uh, we can just see the, we can see the potential, the area is just uh, vibrant, so we're excited to get in there and uh, kinda get our hands wrapped around things. But um, to tell you that we have uh, an elaborate set of plans built out at this time, Tom, would be, would be a little early to make that statement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments and questions before we move on? And uh, Michelle, I don't know, were you able to catch Ryan's comment? Are we recording?
We are recording.
Oh, so we can go back and grab it, unless you wanted to repeat it again, Ryan, I'm sorry, we didn't get to hear you. I mean, your first comment.
Uh, no, that's quite all right. Um, I just said, thanks for, uh, thanks for having us, we're excited to uh, get in there and get our hands dirty and um, we spent a couple of days uh, in, in town there. And uh, we can just, we can see how much potential the uh, the golf course and the area have.
Well, that's terrific. Well, the entire board is anxious to meet you.
Thanks, we can make that happen.
All right.
And Ed, if you wouldn't mind, it's James, just wanted to um, give an official congratulations to Ry Select um, and the, the board and the township for um, this uh, crossing the finish line here, so congratulations.
Thanks for you.
Thanks, James.
Thank you Douglas, Douglas Johnson, I see you on there too, uh, thank you to CBRE for all you've done.
Yeah, well, uh, thank you, uh, we're pleased that our um, broad-based marketing program generated a hundred and forty-six serious in- inquiries that resulted in four bids and I just saw and heard uh, Ryan, congratulations. And uh, you know, we would like to thank the township for giving us the uh, opportunity to work on this transaction. It was uh, um, it, it was, it was very uh, interesting. And also, of course, you know, Annette, I wanna thank, you know, you and James, uh, especially for, you know, getting us to uh, this stage in the um, the process. So, uh, you know, thank you to uh, the township and, and uh, you know, thank you and James as well.
All right, um, I see a bunch of folks on Zoom, also from CCP, any other ques- thank you again Douglas. Uh, any other comments or questions before we move on to the treasures report, anyone?
As a resident, this is Carrie Weatherby, as a resident of CCP. After building a home here twenty-three years ago, we're glad we have someone who's interested in keeping a golf course. Thank you very much, wish you guys a lot of great luck, thank you.
Appreciate it, we went out and played a few, few holes the other day and it was uh, it was fun, just such a neat golf course.
Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions before we move on to the treasures report? Okay, the floor is yours, Mike.
From the general account, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
From our sure account, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
From a golf account, eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Michael. And that brings us to this listeners' report and the famous cable franchise fee removal. I've already gotten a call saying, why is this still on here?
So, yeah, in order to amend uh, the cable franchise agreement with Blue Ridge Cable, best be done by ordinance. I've been in communication for a couple of months now, uh, the representative from Blue Ridge, uh, I sent him a draft, uh, it's the same one that I forwarded to the board. Um, it is intended to extend the cable franchise agreement uh, for an additional eight years. And it's also proposed to remove the franchise fee uh, until otherwise determined necessary about attaching. So, I guess before we move forward, I need uh, two things uh, from the board. One, confirmation that you're okay with the term to remain an eight-year term. And two, that you're okay removing the franchise fee, uh, obviously, unless otherwise determined by attachment.
Correct.
Yeah. I'll make that first.
Uh, so that'll be advertised, the one thing that's still missing, I'm still waiting for Blue Ridge to send me, it should be a one-pager, like a renewal agreement that we can sign, but once you adopt this ordinance, uh, it authorizes you to sign that agreement. All right?
Yeah.
So, if the board is ready to move this forward, it would just be a motion to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance uh, as written, or as, I think there's a date inserted for the end date for the eight-year term. Uh, but at this point, the intent after speaking with Blue Ridge is that franchise fee will be removed, starting at least September first of twenty twenty-fourth.
And there's no way to make it sooner?
Um, I'm not sure how Blue Ridge came up with that date.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's the date that Blue Ridge has provided to me and that's the date that I have included into the ordinance.
Okay, well, I, I will make the motion to um, ha- what, submit the ordinance as written, but could, but also.
I require just a way to.
To make it, yeah.
Push that date closer if possible. I'm not sure how Blue Ridge came up with the September one date, but I will reach out and see if there's an ability to move it closer if possible.
I'd appreciate it. So, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
What can we do, Pat? Um, I mean, this has always been looked at just as um, you know, generating income, you know, for the fee. But what can we do as far as performance? I mean, you know, more often than not, you know, Blue Ridge is a problem for, for many of our residents, if not all of our residents. A, because there's no other competition and B, um, their lack of experience.
So, that was uh, I had asked previously if there's any other amendments that you want the cable franchise.
Right.
And if there is, this is our opportunity, meaning if, I guess when I, when I reached the topic or asked the question before, uh, I, I, I thought I was informed that there are no necessarily issues or complaints, but, but if there are, uh, this can be a, a little bit more of an extensive cable franchise agreement amendment. Uh, if there are significant concerns with what the service has been uh, from Blue Ridge, whether it be customer service, response time, uh, the actual product, I'm not sure exactly what the complaint or concerns are. This is our opportunity, I would suggest if there are, that's like, someone tell me what those issues are and I'll see if there's a way to convey it into the agreement.
Well, I mean, I think that we can continue to proceed, letting them know that, you know, we're gonna discontinue the fee. Um, but I think I'd like to see some sort of performance standards in here. Um, because we do get phone calls and, and people do complain about, especially because they're the only ones intact. You know, so for internet, they're, they're not, and that's a big complaint. Well, I, I think that.
Connectivity is not.
Okay.
But I think if, if we are giving an agreement to a, a vendor, there should be some sort of performance spec.
So, the existing cable franchise agreement, which was adopted in two thousand eight, amended in two thousand eight, and then renewed in twenty fourteen.
Right.
That, that main document, there are certain specs in there that they have to meet and comply with. If they're not, I need to be made aware of it. But the only thing we're changing in that, that agreement by way of this renewal, if we go forward with this renewal, is we're just renewing it for another eight-year term and we're removing the franchise fee. Nothing else is proposed to be changed, but if you're telling me there are issues.
Well, I, I, I'm telling you, I'd like you to look at the original agreement and, and get comfortable with the performance spec.
Okay.
And then I'm interested in learning what, if they don't perform, what do we, what's the, what's the, what's the recourse to it?
Okay, well, there's provisions in that agreement for that, but why don't we do this then? Uh, you can authorize us to move forward, but we won't be advertising it, so I, I can maybe at your next meeting, I can take you through the whole process that's in the collective bargaining agreement, or, I'm sorry, the franchise, the cable franchise agreement as of now. And if you're not happy or you're not satisfied with that process or those specs, then the conversation becomes a little bit more involved, because then we're looking at really making significant substantive changes or amendments to that agreement. Aside from just.
Will that, will that delay, will everyone still be charged every month until we?
Until we.
Decide, until we figure this out?
Uh. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other ways, I mean, we could, right now it's an eight-year term we're proposing, we can make it up. If you, if you want to take a deeper dive and you wanna hit that September one timeframe and we don't think we can get it, because back and forth with Blue Ridge on whatever amendments we think we wanna make. Uh, we can maybe do a one-year term just to do the franchise fee now. Uh, but I would suggest, to be honest with you, if you're pulling out the franchise fee, this is the time to make those changes, if there are changes necessary. Uh, and I apologize, I thought the last time I asked, there wasn't uh, in the.
There, no, there wasn't. This is, this is new and.
So, what I'll do, so what I'll do between now and your next meeting is I'll take a deep dive and I'll come and I'll probably send you an email with a breakdown as to the concerns that were referenced tonight. And uh, we just won't actually advertise the ordinance until after your next meeting to make sure you're still comfortable moving forward with the franchise agreement as written, except for the franchise fee and the new term. Uh, or if you wanna take a different direction at that point, then we'll just reevaluate how much we maybe want to amend the existing agreement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I think that when we advertise it, the, the performance spec should be part of the advertisement. So, everyone understands, you know, I mean, this is just this crap, I mean, just, just like we'd say, we're not, we're not gonna charge you, I mean, that's all this is, I mean.
Yeah.
There's not substantive to this. So, the, the whole idea is the performance spec is, is what everybody wants to see, at least I do, I mean.
Okay.
No?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Without the advertising, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, engineers' report, there is no engineers' report for this evening, and that brings us to old business. Um, so that would be the revitalized two oh nine grant applications for consideration. Um, I'm glad James is on the call, in case anything is missed. But just to review, uh, Marathon Studios has two applications, one that was already approved, which was the preliminarily approved, which was the landscaping. Um, and upon further discussion, uh, that is the board's desire to, to pass on application number two, which was for the billboard. So, I would make a motion then to deny application number two for the billboard.
Certainly.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and just to review, the reason why for the uh, billboard um, is that this grant is not for signs and the priority was for confer- conforming properties um, as a priority. And the committee rating was also not very high. So, when we took those things into consideration, that is how the board reached the decision. Um, on the value win, the value win uh, had as part of their application, uh, they had a landscaping part, which was approved. And they had uh, a roof part. So, for the roofing part, um, the board decided that half of the roof was visible to two oh nine. And taking into consideration the rating from the committee and how far back the building was from two oh nine, the board, the grant is for up to fifty percent of the cost of the project. The board decided that this grant would be for up to twenty-five percent of the cost of that project. So, does that sound like a good summary?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it was the full roof. We said fifty percent is based in two oh nine, so we'll pay fifty percent of what we said.
Of fifty percent, so um, all in favor of that? I'll make a motion that we do that twenty-five percent, so uh, is there a second?
Sure.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And which, I'm sorry.
And that was for the value win. Value win, and then for the Dutchman, um, they sort of have the same situation as uh, Marathon Studios. They had an application in for landscaping and they also had an application in for uh, the building. Um, the Dutchman has corrected all of the um, zoning imperfections with the sign ordinance. They've corrected that um, for it. And they still have some property maintenance issues to correct. So, the board decided to move ahead with the landscaping portion and approve that part of their uh, grant application only. So, the motion would be to approve the Dutchman's um, landscaping app- application as part of their two oh nine, revitalized two oh nine grant application. Uh, I think.
And this would be for the low.
Yes.
That's my question.
Yeah, so.
Cause right now, it's in there.
I'm just looking through their application now for their.
The landscaping is not the low bidder, so, so that's gotta get changed.
So, what the, what the board could do is approve the landscaping portion of this application for the amount of the low bidder, which is eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Correct.
Right, and so we can make a motion to approve that and saying that we would refund, the township would refund half of that.
Right.
Okay, so.
Preliminary.
Preliminary.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, mark seconds, any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then that brings us to new business. Um, and just to put these in the pipeline, the board has in your packet, two new applications. One for Ace Hardware, and their proposal is to power wash and paint the entire exterior of the Ace Hardware Building, which I, I think we all agree would be a terrific improvement to its appearance and the appearance of two oh nine. Um, and that will be in, up for discussion also on tomorrow's Board of Supervisors workshop agenda. The second one is for Echo Lake Plaza, the building that is now occupied by Auto Valley Group. Uh, they are asking, the cost estimate for that entire project is twenty-five hundred dollars. It's to repair and replace wood trim and the board has um, pictures in your packet. And their grant request is twelve hundred and fifty dollars. The committee was in strong favor of both those projects. Um, Ace Hardware got four and a half out of five and Echo Lake Pop Plaza received a four out of five. So, those two are on the agenda tonight to just make you aware and put them in the pipeline and they'll be up for discussion tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors. at the Board of Supervisors workshop session. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the application for public hearing for six twenty-four West Lake Drive, East Strasburg, Pennsylvania. So, who would like to start talking about that zone name?
Sure. I can, uh, there's been an application for a public hearing associated with, uh, a request for a hearing on an appeal, a property owner that's operating a short-term rental. They're appealing the notice of violation from June fourth and the notice of license revocation of June fifth, I believe, associated with the short-term rental at the property located at six two four West Lake Drive, East Strasburg. So, uh, the hearing under the short-term rental ordinance is, references the local agency law for a hearing before the Board of Supervisors. So, if the board, I would suggest maybe scheduling a date, uh, for one of your upcoming meetings, uh, for that hearing. Uh, I would suggest not next meeting, but maybe a meeting after that, and your second meeting in July would be most appropriate.
July twenty-fifth?
Is that July?
Mark, are you making that motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, so Mark made a motion.
Sure.
Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the next part, um, and I see we have, uh, Tom, David Perez from Energy in the Bank on. The next part has to do with the solar panels and the Schedule A that is needed. So, um, Pat, I don't know if you wanna go through it, or David, if you wanna explain what this is.
I think maybe if David wants to run with it, I provided my comments, uh, and questions on the, this, it's called Schedule A, generators owners consent. Uh, there's been some answers, uh, I, I believe maybe there's another document associated with it that I haven't seen, but, uh, at the end of the day, we're as comfortable with the answers that have been given to them, uh, by the contractor. Uh, I don't have, I mean, my comments stand and my, my questions stand, but, uh, if the boards, if you're, if you're comfortable and willing to move forward with the document, uh, that's a, a decision for the board. So, I don't know if, uh, Energy in the Bank has anything to add.
Uh, essentially, it's just a document that is standard, uh, for this, to register you, the solar system that was installed in order to sell and trade the solar renewable energy credits. So, that's, this is a document that is required by, uh, GATS in order for us to register that. Basically, you guys are getting registered as the, uh, individual to be able to trade back and forth through the GATS system.
So, so David, I, I just have a couple of questions. So, the, the panels are live and they are producing energy now.
Correct.
And, uh, cause our budget and finance manager was trying to go through the bills and, from MedEd, and compare it to what we were doing this time last year. But these panels are fairly new as far as going live. You wouldn't happen to have a live date in front of you or accessible? If not, that's okay. I know I'm putting you on the spot. If you could get back to us tomorrow. But I guess my question is, is this document preventing us from, or preventing MedEd from counting the energy that is now being generated by the panels?
No, uh, this document is essentially to sell, for every, um, one thousand kilowatt hours, you generate one, what's called an SREC, solar renewable energy credit. So, this is a whole different, uh, application compared to the MedEd interconnection. Um, the interconnection has already been completed and approved and, and acknowledged, and the panels are live and generating, and they're marking. They have their own system for that. We have our, uh, an internal monitoring system for that as well, uh, with each inverter. This is essentially just for the credits themselves, the, uh, solar renewable energy credits that are then traded through what's called GATS. So, it's different.
Yeah, I think I provided that information to the board, what an SREC is, and there's only a few states that allow it, Pennsylvania being one of them. So, uh, um, the answers to the questions, we aren't, like, number one, uh, we do not, I believe, Pat, your question was, do we have this agreement with anybody else? We don't. Right, uh, so I, well, I'll give the board a minute to take a look at this.
No.
Think, add any thoughts? Uh.
I've reviewed it, could answer the question.
Oh, okay. Um, and then two is, uh, electing to create and trade the certificates associated with the generating units with their own account, which, David, you can explain the account. Um, we can either have Energy in the Bank do it, or they have offered to train Bonnie and any other employee like myself on how to trade the S-Racks. It's usually something you do every six months or a year. That's what's typical, uh, to create that. Is that correct, David?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, and then the rest of the questions, we've not granted authority to anybody else. Um, and we're, we're listed as the generating unit. So, I don't know, does the board have any questions on this?
I'm looking at motion with, I'm considering, considering. Sir.
Uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Um, and then, Mark, you had somebody on the zoning hearing board that is resigning?
Yes.
Did you wanna make a motion to accept the resignation?
Sure.
Okay, so Mark makes the motion. Is there a second? Who is it? Uh, Art? Yes, yes. All right, I'll, I'll second. Um, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there any public comment from anybody? So, now, wait a second, we have, yes, sir?
Uh, any, uh, information on the start date for the two oh nine repaid?
Nothing new. In the works.
I'm still on for the summer, but.
We're still excited. I, um, my assumption still is that they'll do it the worst time possible.
And this is coming to life, so that's what.
Agreed. I, I think they'll shoot for later there or something like that.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Okay. Uh, the other one, what's the status of the curve on the, uh, Community Drive? Uh, when that was purchased by the township, the, uh, thought was to run the road straight through instead of keeping a curve in it. Now, looks like it's just gonna be a curve. This is the way it's gonna stay.
Community Drive?
Municipal Drive.
Oh, Municipal Drive, okay.
Right up at the curve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Municipal Drive, yeah, what you see now, basically, we're gonna move the road um, towards the houses, away from the blue house. So, it'll lessen the curve going around.
Right.
Right.
But it's not gonna be straight through, which is gonna be a smaller.
It, it just lessens the curve. We'd have to take away way too much to try to straighten that out.
It's now that we see where it's been.
Yeah.
The brush has been.
Yeah, so the, basically, like, if you guys are heading home that way, right, the right lane will, will be the left lane, and then over, so.
They're looking all the free filter, yeah.
Absolutely, and we used all that up at, uh, Firestone. Yeah, so, and our new, new ramp, that's moving along, so.
Right, any other, uh, comments or questions from anybody?
No, that would be good, that is a really good curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, years ago, the prior board, I guess it was, at least the prior board, that's before them, what that, that was it, the life rights to that house, and.
So, what leaves you to land that, that you had?
Um, well, we had, we had to take the house down.
Right.
Um, honestly, I, I don't foresee a need to own it. Um, you know, we've, it has no value as far as any kind of park or anything like that, I mean.
It's too small.
Right, so, I mean, I, I would think at some point, we, we'd probably sell it. That would be my guess, but I'm one of three.
I understand.
Any other comments or questions from anybody? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody. So, how are the Hoagies?
Good, it was like thirty, I haven't kicked.
That's great. Did they do individual?